We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at ten oh three P M. And we'll go down. Okay, I am. Crazy. Start off with the invocation and Jim, can you do us the honors, please? This during standing. For the flag of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today on this beautiful Thursday morning and we are thankful for the much needed rain that we have gotten this week in the area. We ask you to put your hands over the mayor and council staff here today and let them do work on behalf of the citizens of Long Island Grove. We come to you in your name and pray.
Amen.
I'd like to visit the flag of the United States of America. And to the beloved propitious fans. One nation, under God, in the little with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, ma'am.
As we do the roll call, full council is in attendance. And as we go on to the agenda approval, I'm going to ask Joe if we have anything to add to the agenda.
We are going to add the recommendation from the grading committees for the RFP twenty 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 five dash zero zero two, which is residential sanitation and commercial sanitation.
We're going to add that under old business number three or new business?
Old business.
Okay, clarification, RFP twenty twenty five dash zero 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 two?
Zero zero.
Zero zero, thank you. And that's going to go under new business? Old, old, number three? Yep. Anything else by the council that needs to be? I'll go ahead and ask for a motion for approving the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of number three under new old business. The RFP twenty twenty five dash zero zero two.
Here's your second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with old business, the discussion, library trustee appointment. In general, I'm turning it up to you.
Well, as we talked about in our last meeting session, there's a couple vacancies on our library trustee board. I've been in talks with Stacy Brent.
Yes.
From the Zelia Regional System. We were communicating back and forth trying to get clarification of where we are currently with our terms, with our term board, and where those appointments came from, whether they're from the county or from Long Island Grove. So some of the things we figured out was it's a ten minute library board, four come from the counties, six come from the city of Long Island Grove. That's in a nutshell, our biggest duty to the library now with the regional system is appointing our trustees. This morning she gave me a full list of who's on that board and kind of where we're at. I do know right now we have three names submitted for appointment. She informed me that there's only two vacancies though.
Yes, that's the three.
Correct, and that's what I was tracking with the library board itself. So maybe she's a little bit out of the loop there. We'll get that figured out, but what we're going to implement from there is doing appointment letters. That way we can track it internally as well instead of just on the library. Tell us. Inside of your packets that I just dropped off is a draft of the appointment letter. Kind of details the responsibilities of that board member. It tells them the reference where their appointment's coming from, the ethical standards that they're bound to, which is the same as council and staff. And this allows us to track where they are in their term and mechanisms. It will be approved by council as it is in our ordinance and signed by the letter.
This legitimate was?
That is the current basis. And I apologize if it's not the color, I did highlight for you to make it a little easier who are our appointees. So our appointees do have to live outside city limits inside of the boundary. If they move outside city limits, they cannot be our appointee for the library. And that's something that the president of the trustees tracks. And they have to inform council of that when that happens.
Who is the board? Who's the head of the board?
Councilman.
I am now, okay. Don Cannon stepped down because of health reasons. He's still the trustee and he's my right arm, but I'm the chair for the next year.
So when you say he's a trustee, is he a board member?
Yes.
And I'll highlight Don is counting.
Yes.
And we'll get into more of the mechanism of how that works when we talk about the ordinance submitted.
Did not move to the city?
No, he didn't move.
The county appointees can live in the city.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So you do have three names for submission, all three live inside the city limits. From Board of Mouth that I've heard, they're all same citizens. Two of them serve on our planning zoning commission. So they do meet the ethical standards, the residency requirements, and they have been nominated by the board itself. And that is Dominic DeGrotto, Donald Tugger, and Margaret Black. Those are three of the considerable candidates.
And they have all accepted the nomination?
Yes.
So it looks like on here right now we have three city people currently. And one of those resigned.
Uh, currently four is what it shows from what they've sent. And that's William Loblesby, Ms. Pilgrim, Ms. Who's this?
Two shares.
The share. Two, son.
Okay.
There are some of them.
And that's in source. And Emerald Hops.
Linda, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Who takes attendance at these meetings? Do you take attendance? Because I read the bylaws.
At the board meetings, Nancy Condon does.
Okay.
At the at our local meetings. Her name is Claudia. Can't think of her last name. She's our Anderson, yes. She's our secretary, she takes.
Nancy Condon, she's not on this list.
She's on the regional.
So your your local meetings she takes?
Not Claudia. Claudia's our secretary.
Claudia, okay. All right. Does that mean? I'm sorry, how often do you guys meet?
Our local board meets twice a year and we meet at the library. The regional board have two board meetings a year and one training day. And of the regional board, they're all daytime meetings, so it won't interfere with Dominic and Donnie with planning and signing in if they remain on there. Our local meetings we do at the library and we always send out and get everybody's thoughts on dates before we set a meeting.
And you're anticipating those dates in?
Yes.
Great, perfect. Okay. So at the next meeting, we will be voting on appointing those three members. Okay.
Okay, I do have a question just because I want to know, I mean, there's no issue with us having people like on multiple committees, multiple boards?
No, it doesn't present a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Any questions?
All right, good job, Linda. You're very informed from the library board.
So we'll add that to the the next meeting for a vote.
Okay, so where are we appointing three in the next meeting?
Yes.
We don't have, it's not done beyond the around.
We know that Sarah DeSher has no long chief resigned.
Oh, she resigned, okay.
Do you know how this is updated people and also when their terms started and when they're finishing?
Oh.
Okay, I'm sure we're going to discuss that. Great. And then there's six year terms, aren't they?
They are, and we'll get more into the mechanism. This is case.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's go on to the sewer expansion special. It's an update, right?
Right.
I may have to rely a little bit on Mr. Walter if I say anything. Sewer expansion is continuing. We did finally complete the land start this piece for what version is it, piping? Or for the?
Well, we have a spring, yeah, land start for the the spray fields. So all that should be completed.
Right. And now they're working on putting that infrastructure in place on the spray field. We haven't gotten any, the biggest thing I wanted to present was we had the pot raining the past couple days. No complaints came out there or any settlement coming out to this point. And they're usually pretty quick if they see it, so that's a great thing that it's holding up for now with the new mitigation efforts.
Great. And the finish, the anticipated finish date is July eleventh of twenty twenty six. And we continue to have inspections done through P V I with Rob, who's very knowledgeable about that over there. And we received those inspections when the law gets those done.
And he should have been out there yesterday, depending on the rain, but I know he was going out there this week. And I I asked Jim Sun to from our office if we got the pay estimate, another pay estimate, and he said not yet. So I would anticipate another one coming soon, but.
Okay. We have all of our G F A documents in now?
We do. Those were completed this week. The final little leftovers that they sent us that we needed to complete with a lot of help from Mr. Walter. So those are all completed, so we should have a final word on that within the next week.
We had to do the paperwork this year on paper instead of via the computer because of name differences differences from what was applied for and what was in the system. And we got a kudos, Joe. Because apparently when you turn in the paperwork, it's it's not an easy process to make sure you get everything done and stamped and all that stuff. And when we talked to them, they had said to us, you all did a really good job with that. And we had anticipated some problems because you had shared with us that it was not always easy the first time around, so.
This one, yes.
Yeah, so we're all set. You.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
And this might not be, this might not sound very intelligent, but I don't know. You said that we had a guy, Rob, that's inspecting doing inspections. What's he inspecting?
Everything that the the company doing the work is doing. He's looking for any possible problems with water runoff. He's making sure that the pipes are put at the right level. Anything that was in the bid for construction, he's ensuring that those specifications are being met.
And that's all documented?
Yeah. Yep. Rob works with P P I.
And he's, Ms. Linda, he's in our window office, so he's ten minutes up the road. And he's our dedicated field person for this area. I would love to have him on the south side of it. So he does field reports and he works with a contractor. When we get into the building, it's all the intricacies of the building, he'll, he's there and he comes. And that's part of our services to you all is monitoring construction and then documenting it all so that if there are issues that come up, we can get it addressed before it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
So.
Working out there every day?
Most days.
Are they going through broken era?
Yeah, not so much. Yeah. And most of the heavy equipment's out of there.
Yeah, there's been some random equipment coming in and out of broken era. So a lot of areas.
Heavy equipment, they, and this is something we talked with Scott about. A lot of the heavy equipment is third party. So they don't really, and they do try to reach out and tell them to grab to go. Sometimes those third parties don't really comply with it.
Well, I don't know where they go once they come into broken era because they just take it there.
Why would they even go in there and go into the sewer?
Well, you can get to the sewer by from broken era.
You wouldn't.
There's not really a way to get out of there.
There's could be vehicles that are working on the and at the roundabout, you could be seeing those vehicles. And if those gas lines in there need any kind of work on. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the other day I followed one, while I followed it around, I saw, God, I thought, huh? Yeah, I've been watching all these, let's see where it's going. And I got my car and I drove around, I couldn't find it.
There's also vehicles.
I'm watching it on Park Street, take the entire net route.
There's people coming in right there in the car way from Long M C, cutting down Lynn Stu, and they've gone in broken era. I've seen they're dead in there.
Yeah, they've they've done in broken era.
And I would also caveat, especially with, you know, most people, even on the cross, they know. Whenever trying to sort of back up, we'll send you down. And that could be an issue with that too. You know, we will have send you down Park Street to give some different piece.
Right. Fortunately, Tony, I was able to call him in the other day, our new public school manager. I called him because we had a question from a citizen. And when I called him, I said, Tony, know anything about Lynn's being cut down? And he said, yep, I stopped and I talked to them because I knew they weren't our guys. And he had talked to the guy and they were the ones from Long M C. And Long M C again also let the city know, meaning.
They also, well, the M C also sent out to residents, they sent messages.
Some people did, yes. But it's all, it's all fit.
They maybe came through the county and I've signed it for the county.
They came at my request when I spoke to our contact with Long M C, asking them to come in and get us ready. Any issues with electrical wires and lines coming down. So that's why they came in. Our contact from the M C is very. More we get done now than what we have to do during the cold. Okay, great. Let's go ahead and move on to, oh, number three. And that is the vendor grade sheet for sanitation purposes.
This is one that I would assume all excited about. Finally, finalizing one piece of our sanitation. So RFP twenty twenty five dash two residential commercial sanitation. Just taking you through the whole process that we did. Advertising was properly, put it on state website, we joined on G L P A, our own website. We did get a lot of interest with questions as that was moving through. Any questions submitted did make it inside that time period that we gave for questions. We did have two addendums to our RFP, which were posted on our website. Again, once you say wall. Once we did receive bids, we received three full proposals and one no bid. So as we open the bids, we before we opened bids, we had a training with staff that was going to be involved on October sixteen. Or as a bit of. I gotta be better than they can be. One is a different. So we did have a training on October fifteenth. The staff that was involved in the RFP, the overall grading criteria. I think the only thing I did not include in your packets was the guidelines for grading. So each section was broken down to what we're looking for as we grade. And it was all built off the RFP itself to make sure that standard was transparent. Present that training was Mayor Moncrief, myself, I conducted the training. City code Lynn Heard, our code enforcement officer, Greg Chaplin, and our building brands manager took part in this session. We did the bid opening on sixteenth of October. The same people were present with the addition of one company did come to the open meeting. And that Southern Sanitation, they have two representatives there for the opening. In the opening, we read the executive letters outlining their interest in the RFP. Some did say a little bit of technical proposal inside those letters, but that was the purpose of it, it was to look at their voice at the opening of the bid. The way we structured our grading did not allow for time that day to grade everything. So we had all the sections divided into pieces for different people to grade, to be a little bit more transparent in the process and not have just one person and anybody's coming up. So we broke that down. Everyone had a basically grading schedule, which I've included. We broke that down into different gates, that way we could still continue our operational functions. And as we did that, we had one grading sheet, an official grading sheet for each company. And the way we did it was you had to have your fee schedule separate from your technical proposals. So we did all the technical proposals first before we opened the fee schedule. Luckily for the three vendors, we only had three full bids, which was the requirement in our field. Top three would have their fee schedules open. Once we opened the fee schedules, we did learn that two of them did disqualify themselves. So in the RFP, it was a mandatory requirement to offer commercial as well. We put in there that we wanted a sole provider for residential and commercial. Two vendors did not bid on commercial. One had listed their prices, but we did call to verify that they were not bidding on commercial because of the written statement inside. And those two were G F L environmental and waste pro. As you go through the grading, you can tell all three companies had a firm understanding of the project. All three companies could have done this work. They were all impressive with their proposals. The technology sanitation that's thrown way past what I would have any understanding is a full science. And a lot of respect for anyone who is controlling that operation. The only company that had commercial and residential was Southern Sanitation. And then you can see the grading. So the next steps would be put these gradings back to the companies, let them know the results of grading. At our next council meeting, council will have the chance to deliberate and discuss and award the bid if council so chooses.
And Southern Sanitation is fifth third provider.
They have to turn.
Transition will be very easy. If any.
There's a lot of that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jim.
So you said the Southern Sanitation is only in office commercial?
They were, they were the only ones that did.
Oh, okay.
So all of them have the capability of it, they just did not pursue that piece. This is a requirement upon which we.
Okay.
And as, and as far as the fee for the residential, how closely related were those? Because, of course, we don't have that information here to know.
Correct.
The amounts are.
So what I can also do is I'll get, there's a lot of copy of those proposals. As far as the B S E V S go, Southern Sanitation was the closest to our B S E V S and it was very close. G F L environmental came very close as well. The only one that was kind of outside of that was Southern Sanitation. And those are documenting summary grades. The fives would have been extremely close. And then they they have a little bit of help with that since we sell a few schedules in prior, so you go in the bid. If that don't play perfect. If anything happens.
Can we then consider the other two vendors since they didn't bid on commercial?
It was a.
I didn't hear the answer. What's answer?
They will be considered unresponsive.
Oh, okay.
The requirement set in it, and those are things we didn't find out until. They did mention commercial pickup and sign up their technical.
Do we add that to the next meeting also, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thirteen. Move on to new business and discussion on the library ordinance.
Purpose of this library in this amendment is to acknowledge the technical part of the regional system. Our current ordinance inside of our code of ordinance does not reflect this. Being a part of that system gives a lot of deference to the regional system, vice city council or the mayor. To include a lot more control of their own library board, where the board has more control as an independent board rather than city council. We do still have some oversight authority in that to include appointees of the board, expected reports. But some of the big changes are they do not need our approval when they amend their constitution, when they amend their bylaws. We do require that they report those to us and we cannot bring our ordinances to reflect that. There wouldn't be a lot of updating because this ordinance is in line with that fact that they don't have to have approval. It also outlines the duties of the board. It outlines their six year term with two consecutive terms. One thing that I found interesting inside the bylaws is that after that term limit, they can technically go for accounting appointment and do it. So they can actually be on there for twelve years if they choose any unemployment. And also in their bylaws, if there's a vacancy, you don't appoint to fill it to the end of that term. It's the rest of that term and less than six years.
That's, so that's their policy?
That's their.
So I have a question. Sorry.
Well, it's also in this. It wasn't in itself, but it says that it needs to be that plus the six year commitment not to exceed seven years.
Which I, that's very confusing.
Exactly.
I I did like this to be in line with the bylaws itself. Though they change their bylaws, since we do have control over ordinance, I do think that that may be something that we can discuss.
It's meant to be a nightmare to keep track of.
And it also conflicts in the bylaws.
What it, what it, what it probably should say in the bylaw of the end of this ordinance is that if you fill a vacancy, then you're appointed to that vacancy time. And once it expires, you can get reappointed for six years.
That's the way every other anything works.
Yeah.
In this case, there's so 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 many boards, there's a staggering.
Yeah.
This is all at the same time.
This is supposed to be said, it showed that in our ordinance, but you can tell with the current term that they're.
That's why I'm saying the way it's written, it's not.
What, are you saying twelve years is the cap on serving?
Six from, I guess, except you're filling the vacancy and it could be seventeen or something. You can't explain that, right? So it's two different appointments from city and county. So they get four and we get six. If we appoint someone for six years and then they go for another term, they get another six years. And then if they're done with that, the county can appoint them as well to theirs, they don't fill that term.
So they can do two consecutive terms unless that board member is appointed to the board by a different funding agency. Right. So twelve years we're going to take it to go for six.
The funding agency essentially means city or county.
We just tried on the beginning, they've been on the longer word since it started.
Right.
Five counties appoint you to the county.
Right. We like him there, so.
And volunteers are hard to get, y'all.
That's right. That's right. We need to make.
We also have that the bylaws.
It's a big board too for such a small area.
The bylaws do conflict itself when it comes to appointments. So it does say that six years plus the remaining term, but it also caps that seven years.
Right.
So there's no mechanism for if, say, I was appointed today and I quit tomorrow, the remainder of my six years plus the next six years.
Right, what's their term?
Exactly. That's the, that's the confusing conflict.
I'm not asking you to answer it. I already had the same question in my head.
So these are things I'm still getting clarification on. We may have to, you know, have one conversation with the library. We're trying to tie a little bit of this up. And also Stacy's involved with it. I did send her the ordinance and she's going to review it based on our agreement with the library, if there's any overstep in the ordinance. And the big thing is just so we're in line with what we're doing. And we definitely want to retain our ability for appointments and do that properly because that's our only oversight. Because to my knowledge, the funding piece, they have full discretion with those funds. So we don't even have oversight there. So this is our oversight to make sure we're putting responsible, knowledgeable people on them.
I have a question.
Funding is not committed except each year, right?
I believe within the Zelia system that we're in the region that we're under, we're the only county that has three public libraries. Everybody else, I believe, in our region only has one, so.
There are.
We're looking to.
Social service.
On the ground.
Right, there. I make town.
Isn't social circle privately funded?
Perfectly, they had donation, a substantial donation years, years, and years ago that.
So basically the trustees own it.
I have one question about section five duties responsibilities, paragraph F, where it talks about changing the bylaw. Do we need a statement of some kind along with that that they can change the bylaw, but it doesn't need to conflict with ordinances in the city? Or anything, any mortgage like that? They don't have this ordinance. I don't, I, I don't know. That was the only question I had about that paragraph.
It's already saying that they can change their bylaws, but.
Just so long as it's in ordinance with the ordinances of the city, because if they change our bylaws to say that they're gonna pay each member ten dollars a day for meetings or something.
Right, um so we could add that. Uh I don't think it'd be necessary.
Does our ordinance need to follow their bylaws? Because.
In in a way, it's both. So um there's certain things that we want to make sure reflect in our ordinances if they do change.
Right.
Uh that we don't control. Uh so there's no confusion with people looking at our ordinance and looking at the bylaws, and that's kind of where we're at now. Um now, as far as when it comes to trustees, they can change things.
Yeah.
Uh but some of those, because we control the appointments, they wouldn't need counsel. So when it comes to who's going on that, um and certain reporting things are required in their bylaws and by us.
Okay.
Because we have a right to know because of our duty shared responsibility.
Gotcha.
Um and we'll we'll flesh more of that out as we talk a little bit with Stacy and we're trying to do that quickly, that way we can get all the information before the council meeting. Um and not have to put this off months if something that we can get done today.
Everything else.
Yeah, I have a couple of minor questions. Um the page two uh at the top D, it says, you know, maybe reimbursed for services. My question on that is by whom or does that matter?
Uh by whom would be from their budget. So if, say, they have a national library conference
Okay.
in Utah and they decide they want to send this program there as the president, and they think that's important enough in their budget, then that's the kind of expenses that you're speaking.
Okay.
Whereas they're doing a service like they can only go buy a car to go get something and instead of paying for a a courier, they decide to send one board member there.
Sure.
Reversing the travel expense.
Okay, but it comes out of their budget, it's not something the city's committing.
Correct.
Does it say that in your bylaws? Does it state that in your bylaws?
I believe it does.
Yes. It's a standard bylaws, but it's also a part of the board.
But I'm gonna say with my with my dealings with the trustee board, none of the expenses have ever been with volunteers, is with the regional board.
When I was um part of the library board, they did have their um anniversary ceremony and I think the um the board I remember voting on that. I don't remember the funding coming out of um I'm pretty sure the funding came out of the regional.
Yeah.
Not out of not out of our specific. Yeah.
Because they're doing now a family day once a year for all the library employees and their families. But that money is budgeted from their funds.
Okay, let me move on. Page three, uh it absences shall be excused within if reported within three days. Uh I was kind of confused because it refers to earlier um that you can only miss so much. Uh but if we report, so is that unlimited? In other words, if somebody wants to miss six meetings, as long as they report within three days, they're all excused?
I think that's giving discretion to the president, library board.
Okay.
Uh and we can look, I did not see a mechanism of removal from that. Uh this is almost perbed from their bylaws.
There.
Uh it's because the only thing I found was, you know, there wasn't a separate panel, say three, that's decided, is this excusable or? Uh but then again, that's I think that would be a piece of the issue.
They're thinking kind of if we're not gonna in a higher end up, if it's not something that we're going to have an enforcement ability, then why even have it in there and leave it up to them?
That's where the the conversation goes, like is if we are in control of appointments, logically speaking, we will be in control of removal or recommended by if they're on the way or something. So that's something else we'll have to have a conversational value to see where that falls, because that just makes logical sense that we're appointing and we expect this out of our individual trustees, then we should have, you know, the ability to approve it publicly.
Right, I just think that needs to be cleared up a little bit.
It's it's on page on page two, it starts uh paragraph three, removal, and it says the board member may be recommended for removal for missing or failure to notify three consecutive regularly scheduled local board meetings or regional board meetings and must be approved by the council.
But then it says if you write in three days in advance, they can then excuse that, so I'm.
And I think whoever excuses that would be the ones that have that discretion. Um obviously, if I plan a trip to Disney at the same time that we only live in a board meeting, you know, that's probably not gonna be an excuse, but it might be, I don't know.
But I was in the hospital during board meeting and I had the
Yeah.
pets from the hospital bed. But see, it was certainly excuse.
Right, right, and it should absolutely should be, and to me that makes more sense than saying you have to give a three-day notice for an excuse.
Yeah.
Because
I I think we might get one of the weeds already done, so.
The three-day notice, I guess. For any meeting, we have to have a forum if we're gonna take up business and that has similar playing.
Yeah, and probably I'd like let's keep our end of it as simple as possible and let what the board run.
Yeah.
So if that's something we don't need in our ordinance, then get it out there and let them have, that'd be kind of.
The reason it's in there is we need to know the mechanism of if we have removal power, we have to have the mechanism.
Right. Couple of things I would like to see added to this is I'd like a regular schedule, not when is everybody available? Let's set the dates, just like the council and DDA and BNC all do, um for those two dates a year, that way their scheduling ability for those members. Um and then also for the reporting, I'd like to have uh some timelines on there, when reporting is supposed to be coming to council, so that we can um keep up with it, because we haven't had reporting in several years.
I think um it may have been a little bit because we're mostly getting operational reports.
Sure.
Um but I think it is supposed to be in damage report, it is the library report as well.
Okay.
And that's how they have in the files.
All right, let's just add that. And then let's also see a natural regular schedule, uh calendar of when their meetings are, you know, twice a year. What those dates are, just like we're getting ready to plan our uh calendar for next year for our dates. I think it's good that everybody's aware of what those dates are in advance.
Those are the sort of.
Exactly. Anything else, guys? All right, thank you, Jim. Move on to the fee schedule.
There. So in this fee schedule, we're gonna be talking about business licensing permitting, site development, um our building official fees, zoning. Um only two pieces that are not in here, uh so they need to be fleshed out a little bit more is our uh building permit fees, and that's something that I got a lot of information from Walter about, how some other cities are doing it. And uh it looks like great systems, so probably I'll probably drag them into council in our next work session. Uh and then our regular spray fees. There's a lot of different businesses that get regulated in different cities. Uh some of those have more discretion than others. Um however, we need to make sure our ordinance reflects what we regulate first. Right now, there's very little as far as regulated businesses, and that's alcohol and peddles licenses. Uh but an example of other businesses that could be regulated is uh any place that sells tobacco, any place that uh adult entertainment um tattoo shops with Georgia State law, because it's it's regulated by the state. There's a lot of things that can be regulated if we decide to. Uh so we get into this. Um if anyone has any questions on where I've pulled these fees from, um there's a lot of different mechanisms to build this, that's why there's no report necessarily. Um but for peddles licensing, uh we did, or I found a lot of this from either social circle um Winder Monroe and the same kind of avenue that I took for some of the other things. So the peddles license, right now we give five dollars basically for a two-day license. Instead of that, we're gonna move over to what social circle does, and that's for a yearly license at a hundred dollars. Uh because most peddlers aren't just coming in for, we don't have to test the board or anything like that, and if we do, we're seeking those vendors out.
Yeah.
Um so this fee it comes to people who are here consistently or that live in the city and only open up shop on weekends like a miniature flower shop or anything like that.
So for peddles license, I'm sorry, I have some questions. Does that include uh outdoor sales?
Correct, and tribal merchant.
Thank you.
Um so this is more of a quasi occupational tax, this next system. Uh there's many ways you can do this. You can do it by square footage of a building. You can do it by revenue generation. Uh we don't want the staff to track that uh in an efficient way. So what I'm recommending is for our occupational tax, leave the business license at a hundred dollars, but add ten dollars per employee uh to try to take account of the bigger the organization uh for an occupational tax. And this is exactly what they do in uh Winder. I believe they do this in a different rate in Walton County.
Um question, are we going to be calling it a business license or an occupational tax? Because there there was a big deal a few years ago about the difference between the two and that there is a difference in how we address it.
So as a business license itself, it's a broad term, uh it's a little bit easier to call anything a business license, it's flat rate. Uh now, when you have adjustments, I would call it an occupational tax. Um in reality, they're one of the same, they're licensed to do business. Um I do know there usually is more of an adverse reaction when you call something a tax, but I I'm a big fan of calling something like this. And this would be more related to occupational taxes.
And so home occupation falls under that as well?
Uh home occupation will be the same flat rate of fifty dollars, uh because they don't have.
But how's a home occupation at fifty dollars? I'm trying to follow that because what's a home occupation versus a business that runs from mom? I mean, I know what I was paying for my business license.
Right, but I think those are one of the same.
Okay.
So.
But you've got down here that it's been at fifty dollars. I've been paying a hundred or two hundred and twenty-five for my license.
This is just on our current fee schedule. I I was a year plus fee schedule. Uh so if they were charging something else, I I don't have that record noted for this necessarily, but our last advertised fee schedule, that's what it was.
Okay.
Are we changing the um the home occupation application? Is that changing at all?
We are looking at that uh to kind of brush that up a little bit, and we can know right now that there's a potential on there that our restrictions in place to make it where really there is no such thing as occupation, and those are things we're gonna fix.
Why would that fee be less than our a different business tax?
Um.
Business license.
It's just the standard, what I see, I can definitely change. It's no big deal to me. It's just the standard what I see throughout other counties and cities.
Mayor, do you know, last year, did we charge different? Did we charge fifty versus?
No, it was a hundred.
Okay, for home occupation.
And the twenty-five that you're referring to, I believe is the least.
Right, yeah, what I'm saying I I recall at one point time it was voted in at one twenty-five and there was a couple of people billed at one twenty-five. That was just some confusion some years ago. But I mean, I can't see why home occupation would be less than a business life. It's a business, it's a business. I can't see why we would.
Well, the home occupation does not have the ability to do the same things that um an actual business structure can do.
Maybe, maybe not.
I don't know what this home occupation is.
I mean, for let's use a painter, for example. A painter may work out of their home and their job's the same when they get away from home, but they may also have a location.
But they're traveling outside of the city to do work, they're not having people come into the city for their services.
Maxine, do you want to do a little more thought on that?
No, I think I've expressed my opinions.
Okay. Joe, can you give us an overview just of, I mean, we don't have to go line item by line on it, if council has a question for you for line items. Just go ahead and and let us know what you've done with changing to ensure that we are covering cost of inspections.
Um a lot of things we see in the permitting, uh permitting and building official, those kind of do a hand in hand a lot of times. So what we did for the permitting piece is a lot of those items are essentially a mixture of administrative costs and what that inspection would look like, that initial inspection. So we'll go over building official first, just so it kind of makes more sense. Uh you'll see on there a first reinspection or a planned smittle, uh second reinspection, third reinspection.
Sorry, sorry.
Second inspection. And uh the reason it starts with reinspection instead of the official inspections, because most have an expectation that the inspection's gonna be covered in their permit. So that's what we did for the permitting, why a lot of those were raised. Um some of them had been raised before uh through conversations with uh our previous co-lead master Craig. Um and these are mostly gonna, like I said, cover administrative costs, cover our end inspections. Uh a lot of these prices were taken directly from the hourly rate of our inspector to make sure that we're not working the bill or something that we're not pursuing ourselves.
Yeah.
Uh so those will be covered in that permit. Um you'll see there's a uh progressive increase in reinspection costs, and that's also for administrative burden, not only for us and our staff, but also for progress being made on a project and for our contracted um what uh what I'll call them staff workers, but our contracted partners. Um and I'll give you a a brief example of, now, I'm not gonna bring anybody up, but uh imagine a project that just keeps you know, they they utilize our officials to find what's wrong instead of investigating themselves.
Right.
So they get an inspection, uh even if they're willing to spend that money, you know, that's bringing Bureau Veritas here multiple times. That's submitting multiple plans to PPI and taking more of their administrative time to go through these things on a project that should be making progress.
Yeah.
Um so there will be an increase in fees each time they have an inspection.
Yeah.
In the building trades, they call it a red tag for inspections, and you're supposed to pay the fee to to like if you fail a framing inspection, you're supposed to pay that fee to come back and come out, and if it still fails, it's the encouragement to do it properly first time, because the the building fee should cover seven or eight inspections for each, you know, each of the stages of construction, however y'all but and it doesn't, anything else, if they can't do what they're, then that's covering your costs, so y'all subsidizing their
Yeah.
which is their inability to meet code.
Right.
It's another way of saying that, but and it will happen, um but it and physically, they used to put a tag on the building card that calls out the violation and you have to, you're supposed to clear it before they'll the inspector will come out there. That hmm that 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 it covers the city's cost and having whoever have to send out to do the reinspection, so.
And we'll talk about that a few more when we talk about our building permits, and that's something I I may have more questions for you when you send me. Um and then kind of returning back a little bit, uh zoning, uh those prices that you'll see on the right are more in line with our surrounding area of what they're charging and what it costs us when we uh at the rates of, you know, PPI personnel. Uh so that was really from an audit of their time and bills from them, how much it costs us, how many hours it takes to get these things done.
Correct.
Um you'll also see kind of the same scenario when it comes to site development. That was something that was put um brought to the city, I think in twenty twenty-two. Uh if those fees need to increase, I'll send Drill email on it, post those requirements uh from what we should be doing there. Then uh it's essentially it. The the goal here is any of our contracted pieces, whether it be PPI, Bureau Veritas, that their time is being covered by permits and reinspections and not spending taxpayer money on a personal uh own property. And not spending taxpayer money on a personal, uh, own property.
So once we vote these in at the next meeting, they will be applicable moving forward?
Absolutely, just like, uh, everything's been approved already, um, though they're not on the website yet, uh, so we have the full fee schedule.
Great.
They are subject to be utilized.
Good. I thought that we need to, we need to speak together.
Are the, are these fees in line, I know you're talking about, um, in line with different cities. I mean, what's that, how they compare to the county, Paul County?
Uh, the county itself?
There's these.
They're, they're part of where I'm looking. Um, however, one thing the county doesn't have to worry about that a lot of cities do is staff. So, as an example, if we have enough workload to have our own senior planner.
Oh, right.
They don't have to worry about that, they have a staff of planners where they don't have to pay for their travel time, uh, they can work overtime. Um, and it's just the heavier burden when you have to contract those out, even though it's a blessing because we don't need any retired person, like a person.
Right.
So counties are a little bit harder.
Any more questions or comments? So is it the plan of this, with the competing, because these are pretty, yes. Next thing, standard reports?
Kind of their standard reports, we have, um, building and grounds report, and that's gonna start encompassing their maintenance that they've been doing. Uh, similar to the last one, the last council meeting, um, we're gonna have more, that's gonna be a multi-native board for audit review for council, if you'd like to see it, it lets us show what they're doing, any deficiencies in our programs, uh, just to be more transparent, we'll come. Um, we are, we do have control as well, so both building and grounds manager and our control officer, they're gonna be at the next council meeting to kind of show what this year's looked like. Uh, just kind of the differences and the progress that they've made in that, you know, three, four, six, five days. Um. Add on to that, uh, we have a request from a council member.
I'd like to see, and this comes from a comment I've heard after one of our citizens had gone to city hall on some business, but with the interns. They're wanting to know what they were doing, how they're being paid, and this, and they're being paid with city money, so they've got a right to ask what they're doing, so if we can add to our report schedule. You don't have to detail everything they're doing, but maybe a highlight what they're working on at the time.
Um, I'll add that into an administrative report, because I'm gonna mention that as well.
Yeah.
Um, but I would like to also clarify the, the role of our student employee.
Yeah.
For that citizen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it, it's much more of a, though we do get a lot of value out of those. It's right, because like I said, we're a small staff. Uh, you need small administrative thing, they can take off and play with our clerks or myself or code enforcement officer. Um, that's a big help. For, for example, almost all that you see on our social media, what's been built, uh, that's been from our student employee. Um, and that's really what we're trying to get her towards before, you know, the next semester, is controlling our social media, giving us broader reach, uh, showing the great things that we're trying to do here, so you want to grow. Um, but I like to think of it more as the partnership of the employee. Um, and this is something that we talked about, she did a little project piece, and it, it's gotta be remembered that the students want to grow are our future leaders, they sound a little cliche, right?
Hmm.
Uh, but the more that we can get interested in local government, uh, the better leaders we're gonna have in the future. Because, uh, so, you know, the kids we get are bright, uh, and I can't speak highly enough of Macy, she's just, uh, if I could not hire them, they is a full-time employee.
Yeah.
Um, but she's been a rock star since she's been there, and, um.
But if you weren't there every day knowing what she's doing, if you just walk in and you see somebody and, and you just.
Right. But I, I just wanna express that.
Yeah.
Uh, a big piece of this is their education.
Yeah.
So it's, it's much more of us showing them where they can go with this, giving them new skills as they're going into college, as they're going into the workforce. Uh, making them more marketable, and it's, I, I see it more as a two-way street there, it's they're giving us a service, but we're also giving school service. Uh, because now these kids can go out and be employed. And, um, if, if there's anything that we can do in that realm, and that's gonna be a great skill for, they have a competitive edge with kids that aren't doing this, and that, it's not just for us, that's the private employers in the county that are doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, it's a, it's, it's a beautiful thing, I'm glad to do.
Perhaps, perhaps instead of a, a monthly report, we could come up with a, a flyer type thing that discusses the benefits to both the city and the student. And the partnership that we have with the schools for student employees, and just have something, because each student, each year, that can change uh, as to what their role might be. So perhaps we could just come up with something like that, and then if a citizen has a question, we present that to them, and that pretty well covers, in, in my book. Because it could change just depending on the person and their skill set as well as um, what the school wants out of them, because that's also goes toward their, if I'm not mistaken, there, maybe you can answer this, that goes toward their credits for schoolwork as well.
It does.
So.
On a job description, not a sentence.
It, it does, but I think we're, um.
A broad job description.
I'm gonna say, you know, not taking anything away from the citizen comment, but
Really?
This is much more simple than it seems, it is a student employee. If, if they're worried about the seven dollars and some cents they're making an hour, then I try, I do believe they have bigger things to worry about, you know, we have support board that's not ratio, that's gonna be.
Well, and so elected official, if somebody comes to me with a concern, I don't say you've got bigger fish to worry about.
No, I'm, I'm saying it's.
I'll have to set an answer.
I'm, I'm saying as far as making a huge, you know, thing out of it, it's, it's as simple as just letting them know what to do.
Joe, I'll get in touch with Lisa Head from the, uh, high school who runs the program over there, and I'll ask her to give us just a one-page sheet of what the program's all about, I'll get it to each of you, so you guys can be aware, and we'll call it a day on that.
Sounds good.
All right. All right, um, we do have an executive session today, um, and it is regarding personnel. So, um, with that being said, may I have a, a motion to move through the committee? So. Okay, on favor?
We're gonna do that. Yeah. Yeah, I got things to do over there.
Hey, what's up?
Uh, good evening.
I think, uh, those folks. Okay, so, I think those are probably the ones who are the first to hear.
Okay.
Uh, he's, you know, I told him, I said, I'm checking the sound, I don't know. I didn't know possibly hidden person down there.
I was like, I'm doing a little. So many. I was working on a team.
You know, I.
I was, your hair like.
Yeah.
I was trying to be, I'm like that.
Wow, there's anything for me.
Oh.
No, yeah, but, it seems to me it's a good enough either way, because it's, I mean, huh.
Definitely for your money, except, yeah, for you. Thing you also do is that.
I want them to come by here, this is the schedule, it's up for B F's way anyways, yeah. And that, I'm leaving your guys out.
They're not gonna like it, I'm gonna ask them.
I know they're not, but asking them, so. Yeah, I, I got you, but just, you know, just let me know where, you know, the, if it's here soon, that's all I, all I really need, so.
Okay.
I just think. And the majority. Unfortunately. He's on. I bet so.
Yay. Are we live, Lynn?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I would like to ask for a motion to come out of executive.
So moved.
Let's move. Is there a second? All second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, fantastic. With that being said, we have finished up our meeting. Thank you for your patience, patience, Mr. Morris. And is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Erica?
Yes. Right now.
A second?
And then Rachel made the motion.
Oh, Rachel, sorry guys. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor of German? All right. All right. Unanimous. Thank you guys. Who was it? We didn't listen. Thank you.